I would like to welcome you to the March 15, 2018 Legislative Meeting of the North Hill School Board. If you'd be all kind enough to stand for a moment and slide, let's have a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, and ever being and ever to be.
In view of our student performance, I would like to announce that the Board held an executive session this evening prior to the meeting, and we will probably hold an executive session after this meeting is adjourned. We can now turn the floor to Mr. Chris Valentine, and the Beginning Band will perform this evening. Mr. Valentine?
Hello, my name is Matthew Cole, and I'm in seventh grade at our middle school. We are excited to be here tonight and showcase everything we have learned so far this year. All of us are enrolled in our Beginning Band class and just started playing our instruments this year. I play the clarinet. Our first song tonight is "Out to Joy", which was originally composed by the composer Beethoven. We hope you enjoy.
My name is Jalen, and I play the trombone. Our next song is another song we might think you'll recognize, titled "Old MacDonald". Throughout the years, we have learned two skills and started incorporating the notes we learned into the songs.
Hello, my name is Logan Baxter, and I play the yobo. Our last song tonight is going to be a piece called "Arly". Thank you for inviting us tonight to perform for you. Our next performance is going to be on Wednesday, April 25th, at PNC Park, to perform "Star-Spangled Banner" before the game. Have a great night.
Thank you very much for having us tonight. Have a great rest of your night. Mr. Valentine, we could ask the students to state their name and what school they attend, but that rule is just a question.
My name is Johnny Lee. I went to Lakin Huron.
My name is Sandy Dama, and I-
My name is Matthew Cole, and I went to Ross.
My name is Brenna Walsh, and I went to High Cliff.
My name is Charles Lynn Young, and I went to High Cliff.
My name is Logan Baxter, and I went to Ross.
My name is Tristan Mack, and I went to MacIntyre.
My name is Jeff DeWolasko, and I went to Ross.
My name is Alexa, and I went to High Cliff.
My name is Michael Regent, and I went to High Cliff.
My name is Nathan Marr, and I went to High Cliff.
My name is Joshua Sean McBride, and I went to Westview.
My name is Jalen Overton, and I went to High Cliff.
My name is Griffin Mustelli, and I went to Ross.
My name is Damian Paul Kelly, always bless you.
My name is Liam Burns, and I went to High Cliff.
My name is Sophia Segal, and I went to High Cliff.
The final single final line out, patrician of the best. Thank you again.
Thank you. Great job, students.
Thank you.
Well, I'll turn it over to Dog Command Arena. We have some- I'll break it. Is Taylor Solomon here? Taylor, come on up. Come on over here. I'm sorry. I moved into commotion. So, a couple of meetings ago, we had talked about the amazing students we have that are attending the AW Beatty Career Center, and that every month, we get a list of North Hill students that are named Students of the Month. And we thought that it would be something that rather than just reading their names in a meeting like we had done traditionally, but to actually ask those students to come here and be recognized, shake the hands of our Board members, receive a nice certificate, and then you also get this nice pen that also performs as a highlighter. So, I would like to thank you, Taylor. Taylor is one of our members at AW Beatty. Like I said, we send our 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students to Beatty, with about 125 students that attend the Career Center here from North Hills. They're career-minded students that take advantage of important career trainings and employment opportunities offered through the school, as well as their specific programs offered for professional certifications. Taylor here is in Automotive Collision Technology, and she was named as Student of the Month for- I got January and February. Which one was it? We'll go with both. Great job. So, Taylor was one of five students that were named in January and February, with Ian Kazinsky, who is in Automotive Technology, and I don't believe Ian or Faith or Faith or Sean are with us, correct? Okay, so we had Ian Kazinsky, which Automotive Technology, Faith Kelly for Cosmetology, Faith Reed was in Early Childhood Education, and Sean Frederick for HVAC. So, I'd like to congratulate all of them and thank Taylor for coming to the meeting tonight and being recognized, and for your hard work and dedication to the things you do in our Automotive Collision Technology class. So, congratulations. Congratulations again, Taylor, for recognizing our students. Thank you. We can now move on to Board Member Comments. Mrs. Reed?
Hi, I just have one. I wanted to remind everybody and encourage you to come on Monday evening in regard to the opioid crisis. We are going to have Judge Opiela, administrators, other speakers. In addition to that, there will be tables set up in the hallways with information to be given to the students. If you have a child that's 12 years of age and over, we would like you to bring them with you because they're the ones we need to reach and educate them. The doors will open at 6:30, the main doors where the tables will be set up. The meeting itself will be in the auditorium from 7 to 9 with breakout sessions periodically to go back to the tables. So, we certainly encourage you to come. Tell your friends and neighbors to be here Monday evening. I believe it's going to be a very educational- I think our eyes are going to open up when we hear how many families in the North Hills area here have been affected by this crisis. Thank you.
I just wanted to congratulate the High School Drama Club on their performance of "Meant to See It", I went to see it last weekend with my daughter, who's in third grade, and she said it was better than Disney World. So, she loved the dancing, and it's- they have three performances left, I believe, this weekend. So, if you haven't had a chance to see it, I really recommend it. You'll have fun.
A lot of tap dancing, which is good. A lot of the boys are tap dancing. And I asked about it up there, and they said they weren't prior tap dancers. They just learned the tap dancing whenever they watch this musical. And it's fascinating.
Mr. Taylor? I'm going to re- echo all of this because I've been to these things for- well, Michael was graduating a long time ago. But I've been to the musicals for a long time, and this was really the best that I've ever seen. I mean, the kids, the lugless were terrific, the dancing was terrific. And you talk about a story named "To See It" that takes place in the '40s. So, these kids, their grandparents maybe couldn't relate to it, but always been present, and they did just a fantastic job.
Thank you. Anybody else? I am told we do not have anybody signed up for public comments on the agenda at this meeting. We can move on to the approval of minutes for the February 1st, 2018 Work Session Legislative Meeting and the February 8th, 2018 Legislative Meeting. So, I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for those meetings, meeting February 1st as well as February 8th.
That's good.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Do we have- do we not have students for this evening?
Olaf is in the play, and I'm not sure-
There are his priorities.
Well, he's over there chatting.
Okay, thanks, Olaf. Do you have anything to say this evening? We do have a superintendent's report, so let's see. We do. As discussions of safety and security in our nation's schools continue to occur at all levels of society and within the North Hills community, I would like to take this opportunity to share some details about the safety and security planning, preparation, and procedures that are part of our daily lives here at North Hills. Please know that safety and security has always been and will continue to be the highest priority for our district. We continually seek to be proactive and to improve and invest in our safety and security protocols as circumstances change in our nation. North Hill School District has invested in a number of safety and security measures, and I would like to share some of those measures with you. However, please know that part of our safety and security plans, I cannot disclose everything the district does or is planning to do in a public forum. All entrances to our buildings are locked during school hours, even if students are outside of recess or classroom activity. All visitors must report to a building's main entrance where district staff electronically unlocks doors in order to grant them access to the buildings. To obtain a visitor's badge, a visitor must present a photo identification that is scanned through our visitor management system, and visitors are closely monitored and not permitted to wander throughout the building without appropriate supervision. They must sign out of the school at the end of their visitation in the main office. Most of our buildings utilize a captured entrance system before allowing a visitor into the main office. We are working with architects and designers to construct captured entrances at district facilities that do not currently have this system. We have a wide network of cameras that capture activity inside and outside of our buildings and throughout our campuses. That network is also monitored by local Ross and Westview Police. We have district security officers who patrol our buildings during school hours. Both district and building-level safety teams meet monthly to discuss safety and security measures, including cameras, drills, police, emergency services, communications, student-staff concerns, and services and supports for our students. We have interventions and support techniques for our school counseling teams that include new student mentoring, student assistance programs, individual and group counseling, among many other efforts. All staff members, including those working in buildings as substitutes, are required to wear photo identification badges at all times. Several staff members in each building carry portable radios throughout the school day in the case of an emergency situation for communication purposes. Ross Township Police and Westview Borough Police Departments work hand-in-hand with district and are frequently interacting with North Hills students and staff and community. Police regularly make unannounced visits and patrols to our school campuses and buildings. I believe that accurate and informed communication remains the most vital aspect in preventing dangerous or tragic incidents in our school district. I encourage you to speak openly and often with your students and emphasize the vital nature of sharing any and all concerning information with a trusted adult, whether that be a parent, a teacher, a coach, or a mentor. Our staff members are available to speak with a student or a parent about any situation. If someone prefers to remain anonymous, the district offers a safety tip line, and the number is 412-318-1111. This is not an emergency hotline. If your information is in need of immediate assistance and your reporting of a time-sensitive event could affect our school or community, please call 911 to be connected with Ross Police or Westview Borough Police. While on the topic of communication, I would encourage our community to reflect thoroughly about what they are posting on social media and strive to be more thoughtful in regards to the information you are sharing online. Rumors, as well as inaccurate and false social media posts, compromise the safety and security of our students and staff by speculating on the district's security protocols and procedures and perceived security loss. I take very seriously the responsibility of ensuring the safety and security of thousands of students and staff members who are entrusted to me each day by the many families in the North Hills community. I understand that this is a challenging time to be a parent in an uncertain world, but please be assured that we are doing all that we can do to protect and to educate our students and our staff. In closing, I would like again, once again, to urge you and your family to say something if you see something, and I appreciate your time and I welcome your support. Thank you. We can now move on to education. Mr. Mathers?
Thank you. There are five items under education this evening, and the first is a presentation from Dr. Taylor, who's going to go over the Online Academy. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you. I'm very honored to talk tonight about our Online Academy in North Hills and provide an online learning update for our school district. People always ask, why do we have online learning in a school district? And really, when I think about it, it comes down to two overarching reasons. And the first reason is because it's our students' future. This infographic, although it's a little old, it shows that there are thousands upon thousands of colleges and universities and post-graduation institutions using online learning already. There's online learning in corporation training, there's online learning in two-year, four-year colleges. So, we are preparing our students for the world that they live in with online learning. The second reason is this big elephant in the room because there was a time when, if you lived in North Hills, you went to a North Hills school. Well, the big elephant in the room is that we now compete to educate our own children. And that is why we have- or that's why, because we have cyber charter schools. In essence, if we don't have an online school, they're going to go somewhere else for online learning. So, we created the Online Academy in North Hills. This graph represents the enrollment in Pennsylvania cyber charter schools over the last several years, since 2000, 2001. And you can see that graph is going up, and it's much higher in the last two to three years. So, well over 40,000 students a year are in online cyber charter schools in our state. With that, there's a cost. School districts have to pay tuition for them to go to these cyber charter schools. We don't have the choice. We just have to pay the bill. So, for our students in North Hills, a regular education student is about 12,000, and a special education student, we pay at cyber school about 23,000. Now, that special education student isn't gesture and learning support students. This is also a student who has maybe an IEP for speech. So, for every student who wants online, because the PA cyber or another cyber charter school that has a speech IEP, we're paying $23,000 a year. So, the good news is we have our Online Academy in North Hills, and you can see that over the last several years, our costs have been decreasing. In 2015-16, we were about 877, and we went down $97,000 in that year. And from 1617, 1718, I'm estimating that we're going to have a decrease of about $32,000. So, there are schools that are paying millions of dollars a year to cyber charters. Because we have our online school, that cost is decreasing for us. The enrollment in our cyber charter, or our Online Academy, is on the screen. I won't read it to you. So, we have about 60 students right now. If these 60 students were to attend a PA cyber charter school, for example, it would be an additional $728,000 of your tax money going to that cyber charter. So, that's in addition to that $747,000. So, almost $1.5 million a year just to educate our children. We've had a lot of success with our Online Academy, so much so that neighboring school districts have contracted with us that we provide online education to other students in other school districts. So, we actually receive revenue from these partnerships. In 1516, we got about 14,000. Last year, about 13,000. And this year, I'm estimating, we'll probably get about $13,000 this year from those partnerships. We also have a very successful summer school program, and last year, we had about 90 course registrations. The income was about 20,000, the expenses about almost 15,000, and we saw the profit of about 6,000. So, are there any questions? This is Les. Jeff talked a lot about money. The one thing that I'm most proud of is that our Online Academy is built and taught by North Hills teachers. And that's what I'm most proud of. This is not a canned product that we purchased off of a shelf. And so, that's what makes this so impressive because they're getting a North Hills education to get their North Hills diploma. They're just going about it in a different way than a brick-and-mortar classroom environment. It's online. And that says a lot because when we get into school performance profiles and performances of cyber and charter schools who are scoring in the 50s, and our schools are in the 80s and 90s, it says a lot about why hopefully parents are choosing our Online Academy if that's the choice of education that that family wants. And I said this 10 years ago when I was a high school principal, that if we don't get in the Online Academy game, then if a child leaves for an online class, they're an online school, there's nothing that we really have to say about that. But when we created our own, and we have a far superior product, now, why would you want something other than what we're offering, particularly when you live in the community? You can see what the costs are. We call them cyber saves. Whenever we have kids that we either prevent from going or come back from cyber schools because we've seen a number of students in cyber charter schools who fail academically, don't progress, and we don't get a refund. And so, there's a lot of flaws in the system, more flaws than there are good. But we have a really good online program. It's taught by our teachers. It's part of their teaching schedule. It's their curriculum. It's our kids, and they receive a North Hills diploma. And I think our diploma stands for itself.
Dr. Taylor, I have a question.
Sure.
Do those 60 kids, do they have the option of doing sort of a hybrid, right? If they want to take a particular class that's not offered, like woodshop or something?
Yes.
They can come in just for that class. Do those numbers include those hybrid students?
Those are just the full-time students.
Okay.
If I were to count the hybrid, I would say it's probably about 120.
Okay. And the kids are, I mean, the ones that take those classes, they're generally doing pretty well in their classes?
Yes. That's a really good point. This creates a situation where a student could literally choose how their day exists. They could come to that school and take brick-and-mortar classes. They could take cyber classes. They could blend their schedule into anything that they wanted it to be. It's not something that's prevalent in any of the schools out there, but it is an option that our students could do. So, this is not all or nothing. So, that's a really good point that you made. This is not, look, you either get the Online Academy or you come to school again. That's not it. And we could really customize the learning package to meet the needs of kids or families, whatever, you know, they would be interested in doing. And that's the other part that, again, makes us better.
And they're also invited to attend any of our extracurricular activities as well?
Yes. I send them letters inviting them to our proms, all of our activities, and field trips, and they get to come to assemblies. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. One thing I'd like, excuse me, to say, is in regard to doing extracurricular activities. As a parent, if your child wants to play football, they're entitled to. However, there are certain rules that must be followed. They have to be in school by a certain time every day. So, I would suggest you call to find out what the particulars are and what they need to meet to be able to participate. It's like children, full-time children here. They have to be here by a certain class or their bench, or, you know, they can't practice. The same applies to the online students. They must meet certain criteria. So, I would just recommend that a parent call to find out.
Thank you. The next item is the Annual AIU Educational Services Agreement, Idea Use of Funds Agreement, and Notice of Adoption of Policies, Procedures, and Use of Funds. This is included in the- this is budgeted in the 2018 through 2019 Tentative Budget. The next item is the 2018 Summer School Pricing Structure. This remains pretty much the same as last year, except for a $10 increase for one of the summer session courses, which is offered through a vendor partnership, and this is to ensure that our cost is higher than what we're charged. The next item is the 2018 to 2019 Online Academy at North Hills Pricing Structure. And the revenue for this is expected to be generated from the online courses. So, this is, again, something that's a good source of revenue for our district. The last item is a $2,500 donation that was given to Westview from Bob's Discount Furniture, and it was accepted by Jesse Simpson. Does anybody have any questions about this? The superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the Board approve education items two through five.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We can now move on to athletics and activities. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah, we don't have anything particular on the schedule. I did want to reiterate what everyone else said about the play. If you are interested in going to the Spring Musical, there are tickets available in the box office starting at 6:30 Friday and Saturday. And I also wanted to mention that sophomore Sam Hilligus won his second PI double-A state championship in wrestling. I believe he is the first person, the first wrestler, to win back-to-back championships in North Hills. So, I thought it might be a good idea for us to recognize him. On this past Monday, the spring sports had a community prep rally to kick off the spring season. So, good luck to our athletes competing in spring sports. And I think that's all that I wanted to mention. So, nothing to really approve, just a couple of things.
We can now move on to AW Beatty Career Center. Just real quick, since our two representatives are not here tonight. The first thing is Dr. Taylor and Mr. Charles, who's our Director of Technology, who decided to go to Beatty for lunch on Friday. I encourage you to go. Their lunch, their fish sandwiches and shrimp and their offerings was really, really good. The kids did such a fantastic job with cooking and preparing everything. It was really nice. So, if you can get there, and not just during this season, but any time that they have a lunch or a dinner, it is, it's really good. And I was really happy and thoroughly impressed. So, I'd like, if you could get there, please get there and support our students who work in the Culinary Arts and the Pastry Arts programs at AW Beatty. The other thing is just a reminder that our April 12th meeting is at AW Beatty. And we do that, like I said, whenever I presented our Students of the Month. We have about 125 students that attend there for career and technical education, and so, it's nice for us to go. So, the Board members can get a tour. We'll be there early enough to have a tour of the facility to see all the things that they're offering. They're expanding programs. They're doing a lot of amazing things. Beatty's numbers in the non-Northern Area Schools are higher than they've ever been. We're over 725 students of the non-Northern Area Schools that attend AW Beatty. And, again, those enrollments are going into next year, and they are up again for next year as we're looking for 18, 19 schedules. So, it's an impressive facility. They did a lot of fantastic things, and I would encourage you, if you come out next, or on the April 12th, if we could give you a tour, we'd be happy to do that. if we could give you a tour, we'd be happy to do that too. I know Erica's going to present about some of the programs that we have at Beatty.
Thank you. We can now move on to Personnel Action Items. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkis. Mr. Wilkis, I have two motions under Personnel this evening. Both, all the items actually were discussed in executive session. I would like, first of all, to move that the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that we approve Personnel Items One through Five.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the second, and the second motion would be, the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board deny Personnel Item One.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. We can now move along. Mrs. Reed, it looks like you might have a reminder under Community and Intergovernmental Relations.
Okay, I wanted to remind you that the next meeting of the Enrollment Planning Committee is scheduled for Wednesday, April eighth, April eleventh, beginning at six o'clock here in the Alphabell Room. I want to thank Mrs. Reeder for sending out the reminder to all those who signed up to be on the committee. When this was originally started, they asked that you, if you wanted to be on the committee, to call and sign up, and she has reminded all those to sign up for the committee. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Newby is here this evening. I'll take policy. We have actually twelve items, I guess it is, that we need to address. The first one is the Second Reading on the Revision to Policy Number Two-on-four, Senior Early Exit. The Second Reading on Revision to Policy Three-O-four, Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace Administrative Employees. Third is the Second Reading on the Revision to Policy Four-O-two, Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace for Professional Employees. Number four is the Second Reading, Revision to Policy Five-O-three, Drug and Alcohol-Free Workplace for Classified Employees. Number five is Second Reading on the Revision to Policy Three-fourteen, Physical and Mental Examinations for Administrative Employees. Number six is the Second Reading on the Revision to Policy Four-One-four, Physical and Mental Examinations for Professional Employees. Number seven is Second Reading, Revision to Policy Number Five-fourteen, for Physical Examinations for Classified Employees. And number eight is the Second Reading, Revision to Policy Number Three-Fifteen, Americans with Disabilities Act Administrative Employees. Number nine is the Second Reading for Revision to Policy Number Four-Fifteen, Americans with Disabilities Act Professional Employees. Ten is the Second Reading for Revision to Policy Five-Fifteen, Americans with Disabilities Act Classified Employees. Eleven is the Second Reading for New Policy Eight-fourteen, of Student Activity Clubs. And twelve is the Second Reading of the Revision to Policy Number Eight Thirty-three, Reasonable Suspicion Testing Policy and Procedures. I think that's it. Is there any questions on those particular items? Okay, please. Sure.
Policy Eight-one-four, the activity. Number four, where it says the club's sponsor must be a faculty member of the school district, and has authorized by the superintendent. Now, those that are already appointed is...
This is for new clubs.
Strictly for new clubs. Now, with that rate that we increased today, do any of them fall under that?
No, those were extra duties. That would have been like ticket takers, ticket sellers. Those weren't supplemental contracts to club sponsors for those. Those, the approval was of workers, team workers, home run instruction teachers.
Like going, they don't...
No, that's not, that was not...
Because that's not a faculty member.
No.
That was my concern, but we still open the door to those more than faculty members.
This is for a new club, so if a group of students would like to get together to start a new club, part of that is that they have to have a faculty member that is their sponsor for that new club. That's what that statement is about.
But they can seek your approval?
Yes.
If it's a non-faculty member?
Yes.
Okay, I just want that on record.
Thank you. Okay, that being said, the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve the Policy Items One through Twelve. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wilkis. All right, let's move to Finance. Dr. Hulge.
Thank you. We have five items that we discussed last week. The General Fund Bills, the Construction Fund Bills. Three is the Budget Transfers. Four is the Payroll for the month of February. And five is the Resolution Authorizing our Participation in the Allianing Union Joint Purchasing Program that also appoints our representatives to that. So, the superintendent recommends, and I so move, that the board approve Finance Items One through Five.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hulge. Mrs. Spade, it doesn't appear we have anything in the Support Service unless you have something you'd like to add.
I have nothing.
Nothing? Okay, great. Okay, so before we do close the meeting, now's the time for additional public comments. Those who want to address the board? Anybody? We could, wanted to just take turns, oh, yeah, one at a time. And I'll read this statement as you're going up there, then. I guess we could, is that... "We would like to invite any resident, taxpayer, or employee of the North Hills School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. Is our policy to strongly encourage such public participation as much as it provides the board with an important source of ideas as well as inform those of many concerns in the district? The board does reserve the right, however, to limit the amount of time allotted for public discussion of any particular speaker or speakers and/or any issue or issues in the interest of preserving an orderly and effective public meeting. Personnel items must be submitted in writing to the Board President for consideration five days prior to the board meeting. Some of your concerns can be immediately and quickly addressed following the comments, while others may require more research and discussion. When appropriate, you are welcome to further discuss your concerns with us following this meeting. We appreciate your interest. If you'd be kind enough to state your name and address for the record, ma'am, and then we can get started."
Sure. I'm Jocelyn McCarty, 105 Darlene Drive. I also have two children in the North Hills School District. Tonight, I'm here with concerns about school safety, and I wanted to give you an example of what it's like to be a parent during this time, and my concerns. January twenty-ninth was an unsettling day for me. I spent what seemed like the longest five minutes of my life in a preschool supply closet with twenty-two five-year-olds. Let me explain. Of course, the day started with the news of a Florida man threatening to shoot up Pittsburgh schools. When I dropped off my youngest at preschool, I was already on edge. As I'm getting ready to leave the building, I hear what I think is a fire alarm. Later, I learned it's an intruder alarm. "It's real. Get into the closet," the teacher screams. As I sit there with two dozen preschoolers, it hits me. This is what it's like to be the victim, to be totally helpless and know there's nothing you can do to protect these young, innocent lives. I keep waiting for the door to swing over and a gunman to come in. Can you imagine seeing a bunch of preschoolers killed? What about the children who survive, who witness such a horrific event? There's never going to be a day in their life that image doesn't replay through their mind. It's amazing how many thoughts can go through your head in a few minutes. Fortunately, the alarm was a false one. The system was new, and it was just malfunctioned. Still shaken up, I rode home, which is just down the hill from Ross Elementary, where my kids attend. As I pull into my driveway, I witness what I believe is a domestic disturbance right across the street. There's a young woman running and screaming. The police are called. When they arrive, my neighbor sees a man run into the woods. Oh my God, he's headed towards the school. Who is he? Is he just running from the police? Does he intend to harm others? Is he armed? What's he going to do? My kids, how are they going to be protected? This feeling of helplessness returns, as I suddenly realize I don't know how prepared my children's school is for what may be happening. That uneasy feeling doesn't go away in the coming days as I learn how differently that situation was addressed from classroom to classroom. This leads to me to many questions about my kids' school district that I realize I can't answer right now. I'm going to pass over the mic to my friend Lisa, who will elaborate with these questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. If you would say name and address, we're...
Hi, I'm Lisa Weaver. My address is five-zero-seven Fox Drive. My question tonight is, how are children being protected from incidences like Jocelyn referred to in January? Or how would they be protected in the case of an active shooter in the building? Many of us feel that there is a communication gap between the school district and parents regarding what safety practices are already in place. Is there a standard protocol in place for lockdown drills in our schools? How often are these drills being practiced? Are we reevaluating our safety procedures after Parkland, or any of the other instances? I was disheartened to see very little communication from the district after Parkland. We received one email informing us that the district has safety and security plans and procedures in place for each building, and we review them regularly with our staff members and police, but this wasn't reassuring. I understand that some of this information is confidential for security reasons, but as parents, we deserve a little more information in terms of what drills and programs the district already has in place to protect our children, and what programs are in place to identify kids that pose a threat to themselves or to others. Some of my questions tonight are, are we providing help for students before problems escalate into violence? I'm concerned if we have enough guidance counselors or mental health support staff to address these issues in our schools. Are guidance counselors and teachers being trained adequately? Are class sizes too large for teachers to recognize these issues? These are all questions that we, as parents, do not know what's already being done in our schools. And I feel like I owe it to my children and to all children in the school to not just hope that something is being done, but to ask and know what programs are in place. And I appreciate Dr. Manarino's update tonight on security, but those are kind of general things that I think we all already know are in place. Tonight, I have a friend who will be proposing what I, along with many other parents, believe to be an idea that will be tremendously beneficial to all the students of North Hills School District. A program that will teach our children how to lessen social isolation between students and create an environment where all students feel included and safe. A program to assess and respond to threats of violence before a tragedy takes place. A program that teaches kids to say something before it's too late. I'm ready and willing, as a parent, to volunteer my time to see these types of programs get implemented in our schools and to help carry them out in the best interest of our students, teachers, and staff. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tracy Puccarelli-Born, and I live at three-three-seven Nichols Road. So, given the increasing violence that we are seeing in our nation's schools, everyone seems to have an opinion about solutions. Guaranteed, this is a multifaceted problem, which unfortunately means that no one solution is going to fix it. So, most ideas that we see spouted off on social media are merely bandages to what is a deeper systemic problem. It is beyond time that we start thinking and acting with prevention in mind, because these Band-Aid responses, I think we all know, are not sustainable. So, following the episode of January twenty-ninth that Jocelyn was just speaking about, I decided that day to become a Volunteer Promise Leader with Sandy Hook Promise. Sandy Hook Promise is a nonprofit organization founded by two parents who lost their children in the Sandy Hook massacre. The organization offers a group of free prevention programs called Know the Signs, which you all have some handouts there with information of them. And these programs can be implemented into any school, elementary, middle school, high school. These programs focus on things like teaching social inclusion, recognizing students that are at risk for violence against themselves or others, and teaching students to say something if they hear or see anything that could indicate potential endangerment of any child. My goal is to eventually get all of these programs implemented into every North Hills school building. Although I could give many examples why NHSD could benefit from all of these programs, I think that would entail that I'm up here a lot longer than any of you want, or I want myself, so I'm just going to give you one example. It's a recent example of why I believe the program called Say Something is essential for, is essential for every school district, not just North Hills. So, last week, my kids came home from school telling me about a young boy, very young boy, on the bus that was talking about killing himself. And he was talking about this graphically so. It was disturbing to my kids, disturbing to the other kids around him. He transitioned from talking about that into talking about guns and shooting. And then from there, he started asking kids around him, "Do you have guns in your home? Do you have a gun? Who has guns in their home?" And the kids around him, some of them were saying, "Oh, God, my dad has a gun." "Yeah, we have guns in our home." So, my child went to the bus patrol, who was a sixth grader, and said, "Hey, this kid is saying these things." To which the bus patrol responded, "Oh, yeah, he says that kind of stuff all the time." Does this give you buzz? Because it really should. It should. If the children we are relying on to report these things to us, if they dismiss this as not a threat and just typical behavior for that particular child, we have a problem, a very serious problem. Did you know that in four out of five of all school shootings, the shooter told someone about their plans prior to the attack? Four out of five, that's eighty percent. And of that eighty percent, almost seventy percent of those told more than one person. And in seven out of ten people that committed suicide, they told someone about their plans prior as well. So, these numbers, these numbers don't lie. Having the eyes and the ears that are everywhere around reporting the things that they see and hear is absolutely critical, absolutely critical. So, why, why are these kids not reporting these things? Well, the answer is really simple, so I'll just tell you. It's because we are not teaching them how to. We are not teaching them how to. We are failing our kids collectively. We are failing our kids. We are failing ourselves, we're failing our entire communities. We have to teach them. This is when it has to start. The Say Something program with Sandy Hook Promise is an education and awareness program that provides tools and practices to recognize signs of potential threat and teaches the students how to take action with the trust of an adult. To make these, reporting these threats even easier, they also have an anonymous reporting app, which I know we have a tip line. I don't know how they differ, because I didn't really know much about the tip line, but I could look into that. But these are all things that North Hills School District and every school district really needs immediately. Truthfully, it's past time to be having this conversation, but here we are, and I'm really grateful that we are starting this conversation now, because I, along with many other North Hills parents, am ready to act. We are ready to implement some preventative solutions. We are ready to do the hard work it's going to take to make North Hills the safest community that it can be. Thank you.
Okay, that being said, does anybody else have any questions? I will, we will adjourn the meeting, and we will then move into Executive Session.
Thank you.
Thank you.